The Beaufort County Board of Education meeting. It's being conducted at Hilton Head Island Middle School, the media center on 55 Milborn Road, Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, September 17, 2024. Public session will start now and go to at least 9:15 PM. It is hybrid video conferencing and the meeting will be live streamed on the county channel. In accordance with new safety and security guidelines, bags, backpacks, and purses are prohibited by the public at the Beaufort County Board of Education meetings. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker at Beaufort County School District and school-related topics. Citizens wishing to participate in public comments can do so in person or via phone. There are two scheduled public comment forum times during each board meeting. The first is a 30-minute session near the beginning of the meeting, limited to topics on the board meeting agenda. The second is a 15-minute section which takes place prior to adjournment but no later than 9:00 PM. Requests to participate in public comments via phone will be accepted via email the day of the meeting from 5:00 to 5:30 PM for the first timeframe and from 6:00 to 6:30 PM for the second opportunity. Requests should be included, should include, the speaker's name, phone number, as well as topic, and must be emailed to the executive administrative assistant to the board, Robin Cushenberry, at robincushenberry@beaufortk12.sc.us. Requesters will subsequently receive a phone call during their respective public forum time and should be ready to speak. Citizens desiring to participate in in-person public comments must fill out a public comment card that can be obtained from the board clerk upon arrival. In the event the board does not finish addressing all items listed on the September 17, 2024 agenda, the board will reconvene at 6:00 PM on September 18, 2024, the next business day, to finish the agenda items. We are not having an executive session meeting today? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously and we have online Angela. And how did Angela vote?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence, please remain standing. Thank you very much, please have a seat. Have the media been notified? Media has been notified? Next item, we're ready to hear you guys wow us. And these folks are from Hilton Head High School Guitar Ensemble, performing EIF.
LFA.
LFA, all right? Under the direction of Sean Ryan?
Perbanic.
Perbanic.
Perbanic, yes sir.
Glad to have you here.
Hey, thanks for having us. We have a couple different small ensembles. These show this volunteer for tonight's performance, so Jesse's going to introduce.
Glad to have you here tonight. Hey, thank you. Hey, you guys, watching you hit those guitars make my fingers hurt. You guys look good, thank you. Ms. Cushenberry, do we have any public comments? No public comments at this time. Legislative update with Ms. Lynn Stokes-Murray? She's, you gonna put her up on the screen? Yes ma'am? Can you add the sound up? Please stand by, Ms. Lynn, we gotta get the sound a little louder.
Can we better?
Yes ma'am. Thank you.
I was just saying that there's not a whole lot new to report from the last time I'm here before you guys, but I did provide this document to Robin, which I think she had with hyperlinks to all legislation and the appropriations that are related to education that were adopted by the General Assembly this year. So, maybe just a couple of highlights and if y'all have any questions, answer them for you. As we're looking at this document, you can see the state paid the classroom funding, 170 million, 30 million in EIA, the school safety upgrades, 20 million, jumping down the $30, you've got the EIA appropriations and that includes the math resources and support, the Math Project, some early literacy training, teacher supplies, the green. That includes 28 plus million for school bus lease purchase, leases and purchases, and 35 million for the Department for Instructional Materials. You also see that we've got about 62 million for the state employee pay increase. You also see, um, that we've got about sixty-two million for the state employee pay increase, and that includes a two point, uh, two or four percent increase for, um, the school bus driver salaries that we talked about previously. The next is through all the new or amended provisos that were action bill, and again, we provided a hyperlink for you, uh, if you wanna read the full summary, um, but you've got just a short summary of what those are the next three or four pages. And then, Robin, if we can go to bills enacted this session. About most of these, the last time we were together, the Booster Club legislation, we all had some questions about that. And then we provided some additional information, um, Senate Bill, which we have the scholarship starting for education majors, and then the, um, pre-length, the Senate Bill for eighteen reads succeed, and we've given you some highlights there. Competency-based education, and we talked about this full act, um, transgender care, we also discussed last time, um, your expulsion hearings, and then information on the childcare work. Following that is information on and that includes, uh, displaying a flag and criteria for early, um, entry for students with disabilities, and the operation of student transportation services, and then for instructional materials, just versus the footband, um, regulation, and then related to title mine activities. So, just wanted to check out a huge document of everything that we, um, for, um, to sort of summarize where we are now, we are, um, in session, we're re- in session to organize and this will be prefiled, um, in December as well. The Senate won't organize until they reconvene in January. Officers have been meeting every course of the summer to determine their agendas for 2025. And then, of course, the, the big news will be what legislature looks like. Probably about twenty, twenty-five new houses. Eight to eleven new Senate members, which is a six in the Senate. It will remain very red, um, we hate that several Democratic senators may several, um, sitting senators lose in their primary. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have. We're gonna keep it brief tonight, but, um, please let me know if there's anything that you need, and, and as we move forward into 2025, I look forward to working with you guys those you have in mind for next session.
Ms. Boatright, I see your hand up, would you, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Lynn. I'm sorry, I was not at the, this is very echoey, uh, the meeting in July, so if I've asked this question, please let me, or if this question's been answered, but can you clarify the competency-based education, what that means? I read the law, but it says world-class skills, and I wasn't sure if there had been more fulsome discussion about that.
With me at home tonight, but it says it provides for the exemption from certain laws and regulations. Hyperlink will take you to the bill, but I am happy to appropriate additional data. I'll hold that for you and send it, um, to Robin tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Colonel. Um, thank you, Ms. Lynn Murray Stokes. One of the questions I have is with the recent Supreme Court decision on the Educational Scholarship Trust Fund, uh, written by Supreme Court Justice Hill, where does, um, that thirty million dollars stand now? Is it actually still going forward, or is it in abeyance until it's adjudicated, either appeal or what have you?
It, it'll be held in abeyance, Mr. Dallas, until it's-
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
They will be able to, to appropriate the funds until-
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there any other, any other questions for board members? Mr. Smith?
Tell us a little bit about this, uh, Booster Club. S, uh, twenty-two forty-five.
I think when we talked about this, um, last time, this, this bill requires that if you have been convicted of a financial crime, that you may not serve as a financial officer or treasurer in the Booster Club. Um, and that the actual Booster Club, um, the school board may require, um, pressures to undergo a criminal background check in the county, if, uh, if the school boards that was inactive.
You said that was inaccurate?
No, inactive, that was-
Oh, inaccurate. Thank you, thanks for clarification.
Any questions?
Just one final thing for me, um, if, if you all, after you've had a chance to take a gander through this, if you have any questions, feel free to add any additional information that you all need.
Thank you. Alright, next on our agenda is the Chair Report, and I really don't have anything to report. We're on to Committee Reports, so we have Finance, and we have Colonel Guyer reporting.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee met on, uh, September twelfth. And we started off with our normal monthly reviews of the Board of Education budget, which, uh, you'll see that, uh, we really still started very early in the fiscal year. We've only committed sixteen point seven percent of our, uh, budget, which is, uh, about normal for this time of year. And the monthly one hundred thousand dollar report, uh, for the month of July was reviewed. We had a few minor things that were shown, as well as in the Transparency Report for the month of July. Now, is Ms. Denise here tonight, Ms. Mattson? There she is. Would you like to come up and, uh, give us probably our final Esser report? Maybe a second till the last, we might have a closeout.
Good evening, thank you. I expect to be back next month to tell you it's all complete for us. But, um, good news is we have ninety-nine three point three percent of our Esser III expended, and overall, all the grants, ninety-nine point five percent. Um, we are, uh, left with, um, three hundred and sixty, as of, um, the thirty-first, three hundred and sixty-eight, five sixty-nine. Uh, we're remaining, um, during the past month, we did, we were able to continue already approved activities. And that's what we have, um, we verified even with the state, we're not adding any new activities. But we were able to continue the virtual school subscription, our custodial furniture, and still pay some intervention salaries, and then we had some summer programs for the after-school program, and then, um, some assistant principal training. So that's where we spent the seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, most of it there.
Any questions? Now, thank you very, thank you, Ms. Denise. The next item, Ms. Crosby is going to come up and tell us about the Quarterly Financial Report for the twelve months ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening. Um, if I could get to the second page, Schedule A, I'm just going to summarize, uh, a couple of things. So, um, this is a preliminary report of the year-end financials. Uh, this is a, uh, these numbers aren't final until December first, which is the deadline from the State Department of Education. Uh, we, uh, have, just recently, we've been very busy this week, actually, um, because Monday was the due date of our trial balance. Um, so basically, all of the numbers, every number in our financial statements goes to the auditors as of Monday, and we delivered ACE's audit, uh, trial balance as well on Monday. So, uh, that is a big deal for us. We, uh, have very little journal entry, very few journal entries that will be remaining uh, over the course of the next couple of months as we prepare for closing the final year-end books. So this information was prepared about two weeks ago, so just some minor changes will occur, and we did do some, a few projections on here. So the report that shows the, uh, budget comparison schedule, if we could pull up the numbers there, I'm just gonna hit a few highlights on one particular schedule, and it's, uh, one of the next ones. Um, uh, one more. This one, yes. So I know the numbers are relatively small here, and I'll talk through those. Basically, we have three main categories of revenue, local, state, and federal. Local is coming in very strong this year at a hundred and seven percent of budget. So we have about fourteen million dollars more than the typical, than the budget, uh, allows at this point during the year, which is a fourteen percent increase in, in the mill value, and that is all due to reassessment. Uh, there is extreme growth in the county this year, and that is reflected in these numbers. State revenue came in at three million dollars above, uh, budget. Uh, we go based on the state projections, and then we, they adjust mid-year for various, uh, additional revenues or enrollment and that sort of thing. So all in all, about seventeen million dollars more in revenue than we projected. Um, expenditures are gonna come in about two million, we project, under budget. Um, it is mostly in the support categories, contracted services. Uh, we did not have slippage in any salaries and benefits. When you combine with substitute teachers and all of the, those, uh, we had, there was no slippage. There was, everything was, um, any savings was in the support categories. And so we do expect a nine point nine million dollar transfer to capital projects, and, uh, with a remaining fund balance increase of about seven point nine, which is what we discussed, um, a few weeks ago at our work session. So things are very strong, we're gonna maintain a twenty percent fund balance as, uh, it was, um, our Moody's credit rating was affirmed at that, um, level, and, and we hope, we intended to, the, the strategy was to maintain that percentage so that we could continue to receive those good credit ratings as we begin to, um, build on our referendum projects. And so, uh, we also provide an all-fund statement there as well to demonstrate every fund in the school district. Um, but I'm not gonna go through all the details with those tonight, uh, but, um, very good, we're in a very good position, and, uh, we'll be back to discuss the final audit right af- at the first meeting in December.
Questions for Ms. Crosby? I have a comment, uh, the, the, this is good news, but it also, uh, this sets us up for this year because we expect to have some significant, uh, expenses as we, especially in our contracts that will be coming due. So, um, I think when we start doing the budget for the following year, uh, we'll be in a very good state of knowing exactly what a mill will buy. This year was very difficult because of the reassessment. As, as you recall, we, we reduced our millage rate, but yet we brought in more revenue. It would have been nice if we would have been like Goldilocks, and we would have got just the right amount of reduction. But then frankly, we wouldn't be in as good a shape to handle the additional expenses that we are anticipating this year with the contracts for our custodian, maintenance, so on. But next year, we will have a much, much better idea of the value of the milks. We don't expect to have the same exponential growth. It's, we're still gonna have growth, but not to the level that we've had in the past year. So we will get closer and closer to just right. The right amount of millage for the right amount of revenue. We are doing extremely well in handling our expenditures. And, and that's is a great testament, not only to the Superintendent, uh, but to Ms. Crosby, to balance all the balls that have to be kept in the air during the budget year. Uh, there are lead balls, and there are glass balls, and she has not dropped any glass balls. Some lead balls, we've had to struggle hard with occasionally, but you're to be complimented, you and your team, uh, for executing a extremely good budget year with a great degree of uncertainty. So, um, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to, uh, congratulate you and your team.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the Finance Report.
Thank you, Colonel Guyer. And next up, we have the Results Committee reporting, and that is also, uh, being reported out by Colonel Guyer.
We had a Results Committee meeting, and it was probably the best meeting I've been to in, uh, in a long time. We had a fantastic discussion, uh, with our, uh, committee members about Dr. Rodriguez's, uh, efficiency report, if you will, on how to structure it. We started off by looking at the initial pieces, which are the, um, shall we say, non-fiscal and non-academic results piece, but more of the human parts of the Superintendent's job and, and his communication with community, with the staff, with the faculty, and so on. And we had a couple of questions about, uh, some numbers on the bottom of, uh, the page. Uh, Ms. Boatright, did we ever figure that out?
From context, I think they were referring to national standards.
Yes, national standards, which we didn't really have a, uh, crosswalk to see what the national standards were, and that's something we're gonna work on. So then we got to the hard business, and the hard business is the academic achievement piece. And we had a really good discussion, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the people who were there, uh, the two, uh, committee members, and Mr. Dallas was on the line, Mr. Smith was on the line, and I think Mr. Campbell was there. So Ingrid, would you like to comment?
And not for nothing, but can we turn this computer off? Is there any, I mean, just the sound, is anyone else, it's like bouncing around? No, just me? Okay. I need a better seat. Um, yeah, we had a discussion, and it, it's the same, a similar discussion to one that we had last year, which is how do you assess academic performance? And then how do you hold the Superintendent, who is at the top of the organizational chart, responsible for what's happening at the classroom level? Um, and so we had a lot of talk about, uh, the current evaluation process for teachers because, uh, teachers are not evaluated on those metrics. And one thing, I, I, we discussed this last year. And one thing, I, we discussed this last year. The instrument that we've been using, which we actually put in place prior to Dr. Rodriguez's arriving, was, I think prior to it, yeah, was actually taken from the state of Michigan's instrument. And in Michigan, they do have a classroom evaluation process where teachers are evaluated based on test scores. Here, we do not. We have a different process that I would not try to explain to anybody. It is a state-specific process that does not include that. It evaluates professional performance, and so lacking that level of assessment in the classroom, it's difficult to then hold the superintendent accountable for those results further up. My personal point for which I've taken a fair amount of controversy is that I think we are placing far too much importance on the test score metrics. It is not well-administered. We've been doing it for 30 years, and test scores have gone down. It is a data point. It is not useful, because it is provided to the teacher after that cohort of students has left that teacher's classroom. It is a snapshot of one day and one time. I think it should be used in a much larger constellation of data points that we do have access to, such as attendance, student engagement, student activities, poverty levels, there's all sorts of data out there that we now can collect and, and augment those test scores. So while I am not against the test scores, I think that using them as 25% of anyone's evaluation in the educational arena is, is going to cause a lot of controversy. And the more that we focus on those numbers, it prevents our teachers from actually teaching, because what you hear from teachers over and over is, I don't really teach anymore, I'm teaching the test, because these tests are so important to the district. So this is a state issue, it's a political issue, it's not something that certainly the results committee can address, but it does come up when we talk about, how are we going to evaluate academic performance? How do we hold the superintendent accountable for academic importance, and how much weight do we give certain variables? Thank you.
Ms. Hay, would you like to comment?
Move this on in here. I'm not great when I hear an echo in the background, so I apologize in advance. I do, however, while we have an echo, echo everything Mrs. Boatright just said. Well, it is, it's true. But one of the things I brought up in the meeting, the results committee meeting, because for Ingrid and I, this is our second go-round being on this committee, was just, you know, the process of looking at only the test scores when many children aren't great test takers, and when we're putting so much weight on a single snapshot of a test, that can also create anxiety for the children, where then they're not focused so much on what they're actually supposed to be processing and answering, they're focused on the anxiety that they're feeling around the tests. I do have insight into kids of all ages, due to what I do for work, but also within churches. And I did ask students this past weekend in organic conversation, they had no idea why I was asking, they are not aware that I am on the Board of Education, which I do on purpose. They flat-out told me this was a smothering of students from sixth to eighth, oh, excuse me, 12th grade. They all agreed, though it took a few minutes, once one student said that they just bubble in to get the test over with, the other students all started nodding and echoing similar, I don't know, opinions, you know, of, yes, we just want to get it over with, it doesn't impact their grade. So they know, for example, a high schooler knows that a college is going to look at their grade point average, they're going to look at their volunteer activities, they're going to look at if they have a job outside of school, they're going to look at if they're a leader on a team, they're going to look at all these other metrics, and then SAT, ACTs, they're going to look at referrals from, again, staff at a school, staff at a job, et cetera. It's not so much going to be reliant on state testing. So the kids are wise enough to know that these tests don't impact their future, and they don't have the fire in them, or they're not understanding the purpose of why they're doing these tests. So it is a disservice to our community for our teachers to be teaching for testing. And I also made the argument that that's not what most of us go on to do in the world. We're not constantly taking sit-down bubble tests every day. We're actively doing things, and we need to teach our students to be active members of society. So that was more or less what I shared. Thank you.
Mr. Dallas, would you like to comment?
Thank you. I think this has been a good flow, coming from my two colleagues to the left to me. My background is, is very different. And the thing that sort of, they're right, kids probably are bubbling the test scores, but eventually, they're going to get to the real world, and they're going to be somebody like me, I'm hiring out of the best schools, and the best schools tend to have kids that score well on those reports, those tests. And some of the best schools in the world are not only American schools, but the Indian Institute of Technology. You hire them, you just take a seat. Tell them what you want, by when it's done. Some of the others, we've never heard of, some of the best schools in the world that I've experienced, come from countries I had no idea. University of Nairobi, Nigeria, big in the petroleum ministry, you know, Nigeria's one of the leading petroleum producers, and a lot of the talent that we get comes from there. Pakistani School of Business, financial mavericks. They can figure out things and present them in novel ways, and they get people to buy in, help you return. So I'll give you basically an example. My secretary, when I was in South Africa, left and went to South Korea to teach English. She calls back and she says, Mr. Dallas, you will not believe this. I said, what? Connor? Kids go to school five days a week. I'm like, big deal, we go to school here in South Africa five days, five days a week in the U.S. She said, no, 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 they go eight to five. I'm like, wow, okay. And then she says, but that's not all. They go eight to 12 on Saturdays. So then you see my alma mater, UNC Chapel Hill, being challenged with its affirmative action program, right? Or the University of California system being challenged, because Asian brothers and sisters score so well, but they're not getting in commensurate with their test scores, right? And what does that mean? That means that creates resentment. So what ends up happening is, one of the things I said is that we need a competitive peer group, we cannot compare ourselves against the median in the state of South Carolina. That's like me being a slow horse in a fast race. It just doesn't cut it when you get into the real world. The other thing is, your raison d'etre for creating a school district is not for some of the activities that we have to go under because of legislation. You create a school district to educate your entire population, and that is something that is profoundly being shifted to activities instead of results. And so I think the last thing I tried to bring up is, I think we have to take a message into the community. 18 months I've been on the board, I've found that the first classroom a kid is in is in their home. It's not us, that's five, four or five years later. And if they're not prepared coming in with reading and those types of things, and we have to let, help parents understand how critical their participation is in God. So it was a very vibrant discussion, wonderful in terms of different perspectives, and I respect what they're saying, I'm just giving us perspective from a different background. Thank you all.
Mr. Campbell, anything you ought to say about it?
I would just like to say that I agree with everything that the three board members have already said. And like Mr. Dallas said, in, in those countries, they have a, a good foundation for education. We don't in, in the United States. And until we do that, and, and what I mean by that is, we don't want every child to be educated, because if we did, we would have a real early childhood education, and we don't have it in this country, you know? So, and like you said about the community, the parents is the first teacher for their children, and we have some parents that could care less, you know? A lot of folks don't like to hear that, but that's the truth, you know? And until we change that, we will be behind in talking about education. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, all right, all right, sir.
Yeah. A lot of good points have been raised by the four of you that have already spoken. I don't want to repeat what you've said. I think there's two things also that haven't been mentioned that need to be addressed. One is, these state tests, they keep changing what they, what the test is, so it's very hard to look at one year compared to the next year to the next year. And, you know, that, to me, seems problematic just in that, that by itself, that you can't see the long, long-range results. Another thing is, I just want the parents to know, the state tests that are incorporated into our students' grades are the end-of-course exams in high school, at the high school level, and those include English, biology, U.S. history, and I'm going to forget one, algebra, thank you. And I believe that's 20% of the student's grade when they take that exam. So the other tests that the state has, yes, those don't become part of the child's academic record. And I guess I'll repeat a little bit of what's been said. To me, the home is crucial as to learning for a child, really, from the day they're born up until they leave the home in 12th grade or whatever. And it's, you know, we're here to educate all children, and we want to challenge all children, and I don't want the public to get the impression that we, you know, aren't in support of some standardized testing, let me say that.
Let me, let me kind of sum up what we ended up kind of talking about for next year. This year's evaluation will be the instrument that we looked at a year ago, and that's, that's what we will use to evaluate the superintendent. The superintendent is getting ready to provide his report on his achievements this year, and we will be getting that when, in October, Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
In October. We asked him to take a look at the academic matrix, academic performance matrix, and put in his goals for the year, and give that to us as part of his packet. And then, once we get that, we'd like the results committee to go in and take a look at it, see what our recommendation is to the full board, and then come back to the full board and say, here's what we recommend. And what we recommend will probably be one of two things. One, we accept the superintendent's goals as is. If we pick that option, we will not have to change or look at his contract, which says that he's got to have a full year on his, on his evaluation form to be evaluated. But if we decide to change his goals, then we will have to either renegotiate the contract or have the superintendent agree with those goals, because the contract's very specific, and Mr. Smith brought this up in the meeting. It's very specific about giving him notification, sufficient notification, to accomplish the goals in his evaluation report. So any other comments from other board members about that process? None, Madam Chair? That completes the report.
Thank you to you and your committee. So next, we're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, board members. This evening, on the superintendent's report, we have a comparison of school systems and, and components of school systems that, that are addressed, and Dr. Stratos is going to come forward and share some of the research, some of the information found. This is coming from a request from Mr. Dallas as an item that, that he wanted us to take a look at and bring forward to the board for, for conversation.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair. You have a document in front of you that I will walk you through, some of the highlights, but if you can, at first, turn to page two. That'll be right after the table of contents. I want to share with you that the purpose of this report is to provide you information on state requirements sanctioned by the South Carolina legislation and all Department of Education for public, private, and charter schools. I will not tell you that I am an expert on all the law that is provided in this document, but I really do want to highlight some very important parts on this page to you. Within South Carolina law, there are 63 titles within the law that address education from K through 12. In that, there are 158 chapters for public education. Within that, there are only two chapters for charter. So I, again, I just want to highlight some points for us as we go forward. I was charged with bringing information for your edification, and I thought that you needed to have some points in the law. Upon opportunity, there are many hyperlinks in this document that will take you directly to the state legislation and state codes. So if you could just go back one page to the table of contents. The document is set up by private schools, homeschools, charter schools, then public, and then I give a summary of a sampling of some charter and private schools within the district, and then I land to give you a comparison of what we provide here at BCSD. So with that, I'd like to take you to the first component on private schools, which is on page three. The makeup of the coming sections is going to give you information regarding accreditation, teacher certification. You'll see as you go to Roman numeral three, is there legislation regarding length of the school year, legislation regarding curriculum, or legislation regarding record-keeping. So right now, this is Alpha A, private schools, and you will notice three of the most important parts on the two pages, on page three and four. Private schools are required to maintain attendance. Private schools are required to meet health regulations for immunization, and they are also required by state law to maintain transportation for the transporting of our children in a safe fashion as per state legislation. When it comes to teacher certification, there's no law in that area. Length of the school year, as well as the state does not have the right to dictate the curriculum at private schools. I'd like to take you to page four in the bottom. Again, this is with regard to private schools. Special education services. As per federal guidelines, students' needs are to be met. Some private schools within our district partner with the BCSD, Beaufort County School District for Services. We do provide, we are providing for four of the private schools, and we do have private schools in the district that do provide services for students who are an E.L., meaning exceptional learners, I'm giving you a new acronym.
Dr. Stratos?
Yes, sir.
Private schools within the county.
Within the county.
Not within the district. We don't want private schools within the school district, right? Within the county.
Thank you, sir. So we turn to page five. It gives you a little information when you see that continues within nursing and health. Are there technology requirements by the state? No. Professional development requirements by the state? No. Roman numeral 15 shares with you that there are tax exemptions. And as per a legislative update that you just properly received... And as per a legislative update that you just probably received as well, and I look to confirm, there are actually two private school tax exemptions that are provided. There's a tax credit scholarship by the state or a refundable tax credit. I'm not a CPA. I will have to turn to our CFO for expertise in those areas, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. That starts actually on page six. I think it's important that we recognize that the state provides three options for homeschool. One can be a board-approved homeschool, where we, as a school district, would be sanctioned to maintain and monitor lessons, attendance of the students, and give actually technically managing and assistance to those homeschool providers, or the language they use is associations. We currently do not have any homeschool associations that we support through Beaufort County School District. Second option for homeschool is actually out of the state, and that is through the South Carolina Association of Independent Homeschools. They provide education for students and from grades K through 12, all the way through high school. They have three items that they have to be aligned to. One, for high school credit, they must be accredited. That is one of the requirements for a state homeschool association. Two, they must have 180 days of instruction, and they must provide a basic curriculum. And the third option is an association that works maintaining homeschool if it's for fewer than 50 students. And those are small, independent homeschools that do exist within the state. So as you look through, starting on page six, I give you some application information. Share with you the curriculum and instruction. Share with you assessment and diplomas and public access. I think it's very important that we recognize that there is a new act, and that's Act 203, that permits homeschool students to participate in our interscholastic activities. And if you look at the second bullet on page seven at the bottom, a school district is not allowed to contract out supervision of interscholastic activities to a private entity that would inhibit homeschool from participating. Charter schools. We recognize, and that starts on page eight, that Beaufort County School District, we sanction a charter school. I want to make note to something very important with our charter school. They technically go through two accreditations. A state memorandum came out two years ago. So they actually go through the state accreditation, that they submit paperwork for review, and they go through our Cognia accreditation that we go through as a full, entire district. And I think that's important to know, and that is state legislation that requirement. So if you look on page 10, you'll see, this is on page 10, technically to page 23, gives you the state legislation for charter schools. I provided you a summary, starting on page 24. And if we can turn to page 29, that is where public schools will start. Again, I share with you that we have 158 chapters in law, predominantly, most of them lie within public education. We all know within public education, we have a requirement for attendance, we have a requirement for school calendars. The law actually has control on discipline. There is a state discipline code. And if you look in the midpart of page 29, those hyperlinks will take you directly to those codes and regulations. On the bottom of 29, it even gives you additional policy from the state. And all of these following pages are actually the chapters from state law that we are guided by in public education. So when you start thinking about our operations, we have a lot more things that we have to work with. A, we require licensing of our educators. Professional development for renewal. That's one I earlier shared with you, that some private schools don't require, but I'm not saying that they don't do it, because we have quality public education, quality private and charter schools here in Beaufort County. So if you can look to page 37, that is actually where I started to give you just some quick summaries of what are offered by some of our charter and private schools here in Beaufort I tried to give you some quick facts. So if you look at Bridges, they have a K-12 enrollment, 1,500 students. Their average ratio of students to teachers, 24 to 1. Roman numeral 2 will share with you their academic services that they provide. As we look at Roman numeral 3, you'll see each one of these profiles gives you also information on student education services. Well, we'll identify special education, 504, MTSS. Roman numeral 4, on each one of these profiles, will give you information regarding additional academic programs or extracurricular. And then requirements for testing. I know you just had a slight conversation regarding testing. What you will see is a commonality amongst the secondary schools, meaning high school, ACT/SAT testing are available at all public and private schools. The following school to provide you a profile is Hilton Head Christian Academy. I followed a similar profile for each one of these schools. From quick school facts, they're located on 27 acres, 64,000 square feet, faculty of 100. They have a high profile on fine arts. And they provide athletics and sports. And again, commonality, ACT/SAT testing. Hilton Head Preparatory School. They focus on core values. There's narrative regarding describing their school. Highlighted areas are STEM, string classes, athletics, and artistic ventures. They actually have three areas of schooling, from the elementary, middle, and high. And they have a large focus on student education services for students with special needs, from those with ADHD, attention deficit, SLD, for specific learning disability. And once again, commonality, not requirement for state testing, but emphasis on ACT and SAT testing. And the model continues through Hilton Head Christian. We have a profile on John Paul II, which starts on page 43. Till you land also on page 46, and the reason I added this section from page 46, there's a why to this. Each one of these secondary schools that are listed prior to Beaufort County District's accelerated programs provide students wonderful opportunities. I also wanted to highlight the wonderful opportunities that Beaufort County School District provides. So as a family member or a parent within the county, you have great options for your So I shared with you from ACE Cambridge courses. If you have that opportunity, have a look at the Advanced Placement Capstone Diploma Link, that there, that the video from YouTube. It is wonderful to hear the voice of young adults sharing the significance and the role that Advanced Placement courses have provided them. Our provision of dual enrollment. And you are familiar also with BCSD TIDES. That's a new program for us that our students are having meeting success. And as we sit here today, we're in one of our signature IB schools. We provide opportunity as other schools for PYP, IBMYP, which is our middle years, and our diploma programs. I provided you information on the IB, so you could broaden your understanding. And I'd like to bring your attention to page 50, which just gives you a quick summary. First school is Bridges Preparatory, and it continues straight on down, right? You have the listing of schools in column A. And going across on the top, I have arts accelerated courses, athletics, educational programs. If there was anything significantly different, multilingual, special education, state testing requirement, or college testing. And what I did underneath is a cloud of words to show that, I may say Socratic seminar, one school may call it a process of inquiry. We're using cinnamons, basically, for describing the same practices, going back to the practice that we do have quality opportunities for families in Beaufort County. And then I provided you, on the last page, is Bloom's Taxonomy. Because as you read the descriptions provided for programs, as well as the private schools here in Beaufort County, I think it's important that we recognize that the goal amongst the public institution, the education institutions, is to move our children's to analysis, evaluation, and creativity. So there's some quick information for you. Not quick in putting it together, but please don't ask me many details on the law, but I will try my hardest to give you information.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stratos, for the document and your presentation. It's excellent. Colonel Guyer?
Yeah, this, I have some Good Stuff files that I keep with me, the 10-year plan, the annual budget. This is now in my Good Stuff file. I am really impressed by the work that was done by you and your team on this. I got a couple of questions. Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Lack of accreditation for the private schools that don't have it, does that impact negatively their college enrollment? Because, you know, they really only have, you can't trust what a 4.0 is at a non-accredited school.
So if I could share with you, these high schools that are selected here, they choose to do accreditation process in order to have quality for their students who are enrolled there. They choose to participate, which gives kudos to these private schools. It's not by legislative requirement, but in order to have Carnegie units, they choose to do the accreditation. And they're very successful at it. And some of them, I was able to pull up from Cognia, they use Cognia that we use as well.
The second question, last question, is, do any of the private schools or other schools other than Beaufort County School District offer dual enrollment?
Actually, the answer to that is yes, at the secondary level, they do give opportunity for dual enrollment. I can't right now say exactly which one, but at my reading, dual enrollment was listed. But we have a little uniquely different here in Beaufort County School District is our opportunity of students who start from either Wales Branch at 9th grade, or students who are in the TIDES program who start at 9th grade, where technically, they're taking a full college as a freshman.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by board members? Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason for the request for this type of analysis was not to denigrate other options. I think they all are absolutely important to the health and the vibrancy of our society and our county. And in talking with one of our elected officials, we got into the discussion of competition. I'm all for competition. It makes you stronger. It really does. You might not like it to begin with, but you sort of amp up. And I think what is very vitally important is that the last six pages of this document, we're having a presentation tomorrow with several of the members of the Beaufort County School District to the Rotary Club. We have printed off those last six pages, 50 copies of them, so we can give lead behinds. We want to turn every participant there tomorrow morning into an ambassador and a messenger. Because this is not negative, these last six pages are all positive, right? So we don't want anybody to take offense to us. The other thing is that in terms of competition, we want to make sure that the competition is fair. And it doesn't have to be the same, but we want to be able to, as a organization, to identify what's different between these three options. That's all. Okay? And then parents and others can choose, and employers can choose and select what works best for them. But I think we need to equip every member of the BCSD with data like this, as Colonel Guyer was saying, and as Dr. Stratos has put together, to be able to go out and speak on this in defense of all the great things that are happening in the BCSD. Because media highlights all the negatives, even if they aren't us. So that was the intent. Nothing negative associated with it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, certainly. And then Ms. Boatright.
On the accelerated courses on page 50, I do want to make note that we have dual enrollment at Bridges. And that Hilton Head Preparatory School has AP. It wasn't explicit at their narrative, so if you could just make note of that as well, please.
Dr. Stratos, Hilton Head Christian as well.
So column B, actually, column C, and I will get that corrected, so it could be in the board docs, will be X's straight down all the way on the accelerated.
Except for Holy Trinity, you didn't mention.
I will confirm that.
Okay.
I will confirm that, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Boatright.
Thank you. I just wanted to share a perspective of a parent. We moved to Hilton Head Island for the IB program. I don't think you can beat a rigorous academic, public school education. And I've had two graduate from Hilton Head High, full diploma IB students. I'm about to have a third. And one thing I think, if you're going out into the community, and I'll be honest, I have been, you know, I have flirted with private schools. And if I had known that Victor Nae was going to be teaching at John Paul II, that might have put it over the edge. But I am one of those parents where, you know, all options were on the table. My parents were both high school public teachers. So I just want to share the perspective of looking at it from the other side now, with two of my children graduating, one, and both of them from top 25 schools, and one UC Berkeley in San Francisco, the other Northwestern in Chicago. It's not the South. You are better prepared for the work of an elite university, or a competitive, or selective, or flagship state university, going through the public school. The public school reflects real life, and it reflects what you're going to have to do. So while I do admire private schools, and I have many, many friends who send their kids there, and I think they do a great job of education, I wanted to put a plug in for the fact that when you send your kid out into the world, having them go through the public school where everything is not geared towards their success, I think that that is a really important thing that does not come out in that report. So I did want to put that out there when we're comparing apples to oranges to plums to onions, as we're kind of doing right at this moment. I don't think you can beat a rigorous public school education.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
So next, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Boatright, second?
Second.
Mr. Dallas? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that's unanimous. Then we're on to future agenda topics. Ms. Boatright?
Can I ask that the operations committee take up the issue with the AC that was in the paper and just have a discussion and bring that, any information back to the full board?
Sounds good.
And that is underway.
Okay.
We've talked with Ms. Oden, we have a schedule, we're looking at coming back with some very hard analysis, probably in November, if that's okay.
I'm usually reticent about a topic, but I've got one. And that is, I really think we need to investigate our, what, our search engine, or whatever you want to call it, with diligent. It is very, very hard, as the board chair, to find past doc- past documents. Impossible. And fortunately, I was looking for some, and Robin helped me with what we have posted on the district website, and really, that worked better than the Diligent option. So I don't, I know Robin and Molly have recently been to the Diligent workshop, and I know we're a pilot program, but I don't know, it seems like it could be, there could be significant improvement. And I don't think it's a user error, but maybe it is a user error. But I've certainly tried to search, and it's impossible.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Also, when you, like on Diligent, you know, the past meetings are in there, let's say you go back to 2021 or whatever, then if you click into a meeting to see if it's what you're looking for, and it's not, or you want to go to another meeting in 2021, it bumps you all the way back to today's meeting, and you have to scroll, scroll, scroll.
The Technology Committee could take a look at board manage, because we just did, we just did board management review for another board I'm on. I think the technology could look at it, because you'd probably be surprised, and not in a good way, how expensive Diligent is.
Yeah. All right. That's fine with me that you guys take it on first and then come back to the board with what you find out.
Marcia's hate life right now.
Okay. Okay. Any other future topics? Okay. Any announcement, Dr. Rodriguez?
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I actually have two announcements, if you'll bear with me, but they're short. First, I'd like to acknowledge that Hispanic Heritage Month started on Sunday, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the amazing contributions of our Hispanic population here, our Hispanic students. And the second thing is, and I think this is pretty cool, today is Constitution Signing Day. September 17th, 1787, we signed the Constitution. So as some of you are aware, we have a new debate program that was recently acquired by the Bill of Rights Institute, which is working with the South Carolina Department of Education to provide, they had a whole thing. So if students were interested, they could go and look at that, and there's some great opportunities there on that website for Constitution Signing Day.
Thank you. All right. We're down to second. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize our colleague, Ms. Boatright. Incubate Debate, which was my first experience within earlier this year, they have actually been acquired by a larger entity, giving them more heft in the marketplace, and Ms. Boatright, as I understand it, was one of the key people who got them to come here. And Mr. Fishback speaks highly of you, so.
All right. Next up are our second public comments, and we have Mr. Jim Miller in person, and his topic is quantitative comparison of Beaufort County School District's band versus others in the state. And it says below that, continued.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Last week, it's interesting, my topic blends right in with everything about comparison of other schools, but with the band and some of those arts, there aren't test scores, et cetera. And therefore, it's hard to compare. And I mentioned last week that I had put together a document that I had referred with the district personnel, and some of you have asked for a copy. It isn't designed to just, I'll give you an example. It needs an explanation as you go along. Here, almost all of it is just print pages out of the South Carolina Band Directors Association. There are four major areas that they judge schools, that judges actually come, or the school goes to a program, and they judge. One is the Outstanding Performance Award. It is award that is judged on all four of those categories. And this is an example that it's hard to, this is just the cover page of that. You turn the page, and then the next thing you, well, on this cover page, it gives you five decades, 50 opportunities or decades, five decades of where you can look at past performers. You turn the page, and I've printed out the performers for 2023. Approximately one-fourth of all schools' bands achieved this award. So I've gone back through those decades to see how often a Beaufort County school has achieved it. I started off with the most recent year, another year back, another year, you hit kind of the COVID, whether there weren't any, then I continued, and finally get to 1219 or 2019, and one school achieved it. Keep going. That is the only time that this award has been awarded to a Beaufort County school. It is, says Outstanding Performance Award, senior division.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. There being no further business, we can adjourn by unanimous consent, and thank you to everyone who tuned in. Good night, and we adjourn.